This is a work discussion on the facility locations, potentials that we have over at Gornville. It's of course, it's just a work session, there'll be no official action taken tonight. And I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Barry for kind of an overview of the possibilities that we have.
I've asked Mr. Warren and Mr. Gibbs here, just because if the board had any questions about sewer and that type of thing, they could give you more information than anybody. What you're looking at right here, this is becoming Gornville High School, which is obviously coming from the interstate, New Milton Highway. This is the McKinney lots, right here. And this is where Cornerstone Restaurant. This is the church, I seen Mr. Wood, that's church, or I call it Mr. Woodard's church, it's not your church, but I call it that. And then, this is the five acres that belongs to the church. Right away in, of course, you've got the road frontage here. I can tell you what I know, that's kinda what I know. Mr. Wood, you did say that the church is open to the possibility of selling if it was...
They talked about it actually.
And then, where's Shane? Shane, Ms. Agee had sent a message to you that they would be interested if down the road, if maybe selling some property, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, she didn't tell me, but I wanna make sure that was out. Both of them, I think, would have, this is a power line, there might be issues, I'm just trying to point out anything on both pieces of property. This, also, I think both of them's got, I call them wet water streams, I don't know what brand, what you call it, blue streams?
Wet weather conveyance, blue stream.
I think that, on both pieces of property, and we'll get to that, so... You know, this, this is a view off of, you'd be back here, I think's where the restaurant would be, going down Hickman Highway, looking up at Eagle, that's probably where the stream is there. And like I said, as far as sewer, rock, goes kinda question, Mr. Gibbs and Mr. Warren, if you don't mind, if anybody's got any questions. You all wanna do both of them and then come back?
Let's do both of them and come back.
Okay. All right. This is an area, which right here's Gornville High School. The road in front of Gornville, like, goes straight across, there's a rightaway on this piece of property, this is the Preston property, this is I-40. I jokingly, but truthfully, this is the Love Shack sign you see on the interstate, right there, it goes with the property. And it kinda goes by the road here, you'll have to see better on the actual plats, a little better depth defined, but it gives you some options coming out of the roadway here, like I said, there's a rightaway lazy here, so obviously you've got road frontage here, railroad track, right there. Go to the plat.
I don't have plat about enough, I can get it out.
Oh, okay, that's okay, no, it's all right. We headed, we headed a burger, because Mary was talking about the railroad track, footage off the railroad track.
Mm-hmm.
Right there. Right here's Stonewall. Back here to the high school, and that's what you're in that, again, 'cause this is woodland right here. There's been, this has actually been mowed, there is some wet right in here, but that's not an issue, is it, Mr. Gibbs, you don't think, there's no, it's not showing any...
There's a drain, when the interstate comes under there, there's drains, 'cause it's probably just gone.
It's not showing anything in the flood plain, I guess what I'm trying to say. This, this is 27 acres, which you got, I think it's 50 foot off the railroad, and another one's 20 acres, approximately. And this piece of property already has sewer watering gangs, is that correct?
Yeah, there's a six inch sewer, gravity sewer line that goes right down through, no, right through the edge of where that water, that stream is.
Going where the wet stream is?
Yeah, it's right to the, it's on, this is what I would call the south side, and the six inch, or six inch gravity fence sewer line down through there, how many man holds it, three, four?
Can't remember, sounds about right, they run down right there.
That's the, that's the only place on the flood plain.
Well, down there is whole.
And there a little place showing in the flood plain?
Yeah, right there, that's where the whole place is, it comes right down that way right there.
Would this be, question, I mean, would this be developed, could it be developed, I mean, do you feel like that land, we could be something done with that, I mean, is it, or a reason why that's grown up?
I think it's just grown up just because it's kinda been that way over time.
But you don't see a reason that couldn't be developed?
No, sir, not, not that I can think of.
What about, what about the stream? That's a question that we get asked on both pieces of property.
For the area around the stream, and like you said, this is gonna apply to both pieces of property, typically, I think that's gonna require a little buffer there, like certain things, on the side of the stream, but that applies to both equally, but you can cross that, it just requires permitting, that's not a big deal, those requests, those, we don't pay for those, that's just part of the damage.
This one, we got an option, what, 40, how many days left on it?
Uh, the option on this piece of property expires March the 19th. Option that 500,000 and 8,000 has been paid, and would be a credit toward that if you exercise the option.
If you've got questions, I'll be, what I'll, I'll either research and find out, or I'll try to answer it, or like I said, I was reading, I was, these two gentlemen are bigger than that.
I know this is a, a very difficult question to ask you right now, Mr. Warren, but how much more, just utility wise, would it cost, what's the cost difference in the two properties?
Okay, you're talking about on the Rose property?
Versus...
I guess, I guess we'd be fair to say if they were both equal, well, both were free or both 500,000, this one, what would it cost to difference in them, which would be the best for the money, uh, what would it cost different?
Right, what's the difference in the cost?
We'll just kinda see about how far we have.
Because we're looking at quite, I mean, you gotta, you gotta think, we're looking at quite a large sum, free, I mean, it's, it'd have to be a big difference.
Jerry Allen, well, you can answer this, but what about the power lines that run across the property?
It costs you, it costs you, 60 grand, pretty much, stone, you gotta get stone.
But you have to respect that, I don't see an exact amount, we've seen sometimes 50 feet, sometimes 100.
Yeah.
It really depends on how that, like, not since it's mentioned, but it's reasonable to assume there is some type of encumbrance with that line.
Could you still have a party lock related to the lines, I mean, you can't leave, but...
That's possible, it depends on who controls the line, sometimes you can get permits to build under the line, as long as you're down the ground level, they don't want you to get up, you know, any structures or anything like that, so...
The legislature would play along the state route.
I'm measuring while we're talking here.
Yep.
On that, that property, depending on where you locate a building, I'm just kinda looking, when you looked at the property amount, at the kinda corner, that was down by the creek, kinda behind what I would call church property, that's about 2,000 feet away from the, plus the sewer, which is at the very corner there, across from the dollar store. And to get that 2,000 feet, just a rough number, if it's gravity sewer, that will be about 150 dollars a foot, that's somewhere in that good of about 300,000 dollars for 2,000 feet. Now, that would most likely have to be a pump, because it's kinda down in the hole, it doesn't count around the creek with the blood supply, if you have to have a pump station here, normally that's gonna be about 100 to 150,000. And I'm throwing out some kinda range in numbers, but what we've seen with sewer prices, getting them out, in the last couple of years, is somewhere between 100 dollars and 150 dollars a foot. And if they see rock, it's gonna be more on the highway. And if it is a pump station, you have the cost for the pump station, sometimes you can pump that out, that's a little bit smaller line, so it might not be 150, maybe more like about 100, so... That would kinda talk about the sewer on that particular site, it would take a good bit of investment to get the sewer there. Just as kinda another information on that, the water line in there is located on the side of the road that goes out toward New Milton, and that's about 1,000 feet, give or take, away from any, probably where you might wanna have a building site, and 1,000 feet of water line, would probably be about 40 or 50 dollars a foot, so that's 50,000 dollars, plus you've got, one thing I forgot to mention, is that both of those, they're both on the other side of the road, so you have to come under, go under the road to get there, there's gonna be some additional space for that.
Are there any encumbrances on that property?
We preliminary have researched both pieces of property, there's a transmission line easement, when we're taking this, I would call it Mr. Rose's property, there's a transmission line easement, telephone line easement, nothing aside from those, and then the other, same, same thing. No encumbrances that we say preliminary, we've looked at both.
And with the Preston property, there's no sewer, no anything that we would have to...
On, on the Preston piece?
Correct, it, it comes, you said, with the...
My understanding, research, I think Mr. Gibbs said that the natural sewer runs dead through the middle of the property, and then it's already got natural gas to it, and, so there shouldn't be anything, Jerry knows more about that area, but we've researched it.
Yes, sir.
Am I, am I correct in that?
You are correct, that, the sewer line that the mayor mentioned runs kinda adjacent to the stream, the ditch there, creek, comes down to the pump station, it sits down there kinda corner next to the interstate. You mentioned the gas line, it's right there along Stonewall Road, the water line is on the east side of Stonewall Road, that's a brand new six inch line that was put in.
So we, we wouldn't have to go up?
Yes, you would have to go under that road, I forget what the rightway is there, that's probably like a 40 good, more inch or something in that nature, so that would probably be in that good of...
And you're still gonna, you're still, you're still gonna have to lay another 1,000 feet of line to get it to where you're gonna go to with that?
Depending on where you live on the site, yes, you would have to get there, so the water line situation...
Balances out.
...to balance.
So we're looking more at a sewer line, sewer difference?
He said that there was a six inch sewer pipe, I guess, is that large enough, I mean, is that adequate?
But you gotta, about running that sewer line, it costs you more to run a sewer line, but it increases the value of property though.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know about sewer and water line, he's how, water line, I think it's 18 to 20 to 100 a foot.
I don't think we are, but later meeting, but I don't think that's right.
It's plenty of, it's plenty of water.
They're putting a pump station, pile of dollars to it, I don't know that.
Are we sure?
Mm-hmm. That's the future plan.
Mr. Warren, but Mr. Mary, if there's anything that we need, I guess I heard it, see...
Shouldn't be within the next three years.
I guess so, they press, we've got to decide, one, both, none, nothing, switch its decision, Jerry?
There's not been a deadline placed, there's been an option, March 19th, it actually expired on the 20th, but it's 19th that I've heard it, but we won't go the last day, that's the impending deadline, of course, we're still in the process, and we're in the process of talking to Mr. Rose about the, the conditions placed on the granting of the essential property rights, and there are some, there are some things that he wants in exchange for that, which I can go over as the board likes to know, but it, it's still in process as far as that goes, but other than that, I can go over kinda what he...
I think you need to go over, let him kinda know what, some of the details that he's looking for.
Sure, and again, please understand that this is still a matter that could be negotiated back and forth as instructed, but he is asking for a contingency period of, of a year, which would mean that the school board would have a year to obtain the necessary plans, approval, funding, and authority to construct a secondary full campus high school. That's fairly important, and that's fairly important to him as we understand it, and I hate to speak for him, but as we understand it, that's what he wants to see for the property. And that doesn't mean you have a year to build, no confusion, that's impossible, no way you could do that, but as far as the plans approved, and right now that term is a year, possibly could be altered or negotiated.
Johnny, what is a, what would be considered a full campus high school, what does that encompass?
That encompasses, it's in here, classroom buildings, cafeterias, libraries, assembly halls, and athletic facilities. He is particularly interested in a robust college and career technical education program at facilities, Mr. Rose has been a strong advocate of the FSA program, would like to see that. The primary structure should be of traditional design and architecture, and should face Highway 264, so that's part of the, part of the direction. If the board appoints a committee, Mr. Rose, he couldn't and he wouldn't have approval or final say, but he just likes to be included in the, as the plans are being considered. And that's, the contingencies primarily, at this point, would have a year to have plans approved, obtain the funding, get any necessary approvals, county commission and otherwise, and have it ready to, a plan in place, effectively, but the primary stipulation is, in our view, it being a hospital, and that would, if I could say, there's probably been something, we've been very adamant in the discussions, that's been it, it would be a hospital, some of these other things we may be able to, to adjust or negotiate, and it to be a full campus high school, so everything to be located in that, in that spot.
There's, there's a plan, this plan does not make blueprints?
Well, plans and specification, yes, sir, I think...
How can you get blueprints, draw it up in a year?
I, I, and maybe, I, I thought, and again, I think he's, from talking, that was something that might could go back, but I feel like he was saying we need to have a financial plan, I mean, I, that's where I took it, just for a fact, they told us it'd take 12, 18 months to draw the architectural plans, but...
Oh, yeah, every bit of that.
It'll take a while.
But I took it, he meant more on the financial plan, have a, have a finance plan.
His primary purpose, and again, I hate to speak for him, his primary purpose, he, he wouldn't be donating this as an investment piece of property or something to the school board to hold, he would like to see a direction of it going forward.
Well, he made two comments in the meetings, he didn't want to donate it for us, just to have it for equity, and it lay there 20 years from now, and the thing, the other thing, and I thought he, by the full campus, he didn't want us to say, okay, we're gonna fulfill that warrant, but softball field, and they still lay them there. I, I think that's, I don't want to put words in my mouth, he's a very intelligent person, but that's, that's how I read what he meant with that. And the, the, the other piece of property, there's no restrictions, no...
Do what you want to with it.
No deadlines, other than...
No deadlines, we've got the billboard, so you don't want Club Shack next to your school, so that would become the school system. And then I, I've actually spoken with the owner of the billboard company, and of course, he's welcome to still have it, but the content, we would have input on the content. And, and of course, that's, that's a source of income, he pays, there's rental payments that go on, that, it escapes me from what they are right now, but it's not an insignificant amount over a period of time. That was, that was kinda a sticky point in the negotiations with them, but we didn't feel, they had talked about possibly carving that out because it is an income producer, but we didn't feel that would be appropriate, because we wanted to be able to control what's next to the campus.
I mean, we're gonna be able to take it up, right?
Sir.
Be able to remove it, right?
Well, it's under a lease right now until 2021, I believe.
Realistically, if everybody was agree, it's probably couldn't have a, a working facilities with the time the lease was out, and what we kinda figured, the lease should be, we didn't hope it went to, was it at that point?
And Mr. Apple, I could be wrong on that, but I think that's where, it's, it's a few years down the road before that lease on the sign is up.
We couldn't have opened the door on the school, and that...
Probably not, but even if you left it, the owner of the, the sign company fenced in, blocked off, and we would have control of the content that's on there, or at least input on the content, it wouldn't, you wouldn't want, you know, alcohol or something next to a school, and he, he understood that and would be willing to, to negotiate that.
And, and the cost of that piece of property, again, just right to this?
Uh, you've got an option for 500,000 dollars, you paid 8,000 dollars toward it, so purchase price, final purchase price of 492.
And the Rose piece?
Is, that contingency is, I think we've put consideration of 10 dollars in the contract. But it's upon the, and, and what I read off to you is, is part of, I mean, obviously there's surveys of the things you have to do.
Surveys on which, both?
Uh, you'd, you'd wanna survey them both up.
Oh, yeah.
But in, in reality, they're about, I mean, they're the same, because one has utilities and one doesn't have utilities, I mean, it's not exactly a wash but close.
Yeah, that's, and that's where I've been, of course, everybody gets heated up, which one would you want, I mean, both properties have pros and cons. I like the Preston property because basically the sewer's there, now water's a wash, natural gas is there, but that's a wash too, because the Rose property has natural gas in it also, so natural gas is there, also goes out heat down there, and then, and you look, look utilities. Now, then I have some cons about this piece of property, the interstate right there, possibilities that helps the interstate for safety reasons, can I do the traffic, I don't know if the traffic right there, a few cons, and then of course, when you get to the Rose property, of course, that's, that's gonna be about half a million dollars actually, and you get to the Rose property, you know, it's kinda out on the other end of town, you know, con, you know, con of that would be probably the sewer, the biggest thing I say on that's getting sewer down there, of course, you owe it, it'd be two or 300,000 dollars to do that down the road.
Tommy, what's your concern about the...
That'd increase your property value too, if you put the sewer in.
Oh, I remember, sorry, about the railroad track too, also, the railroad track being sitting there too.
I mean, that's, that's relatively close, and then between them...
Yeah, the Preston property also, I...
You're, you're right there in the noise of the freeway and the railroad track, I mean, granted...
Well, and some issues, if, you know, buses and there was a track coming through, even, even if the safety department ain't out, it might be an efficiency thing, also, I've been actually looking at everything. And then, on the Rose property, you know, of course, I, the biggest sticker I say on the Rose property is a sewer, you know, but if you didn't spend a half a million dollars for a piece of property, you don't have a piece of property basically for 10 dollars, you know, you've got some money there, you can...
But you could spend 400,000 dollars, I wouldn't have a million dollar piece of property.
Yeah, and plenty of road frontage, I mean, I don't know, anybody been down Hickman Highway, that's a good road right there, and then you got access to the other side, I mean, now look at that piece of property, I think, well, that's a nice piece of property, and it would secure a little bit more land next to it, you know, you'd have, you know, you could purchase more land in case we ever decided to, can't ever decide what, you know, how, how big of a school we wanted to build on there or something, you know, there's more, I, I think there's a little bit more possibility right there at that property, and then, both of us took good pieces of property, you know, and we just might have to decide...
You're lucky you have two to choose from.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, you're very lucky to have two to choose from, so I, I think that four way right there could be a little problem traffic wise, but of course, now if you follow some traffic this way and some, I know you can't get the buses out the other way, but maybe you can get some cars out that way or something, you know, maybe that could get us a little bit better.
You could probably, I mean, you could probably just make them come in one way and go out the other way, almost.
And then again, I don't know, if somebody else had to tell me, or is there somebody, is there any way we could get a grant or something to help us put in sewer, I don't, I don't know.
Is that...
Mr. Gibbs, is that, Mr. Warren, that be something, some possibilities? They're asking, or any type of grant?
Yeah, would, would a, could a school or somebody get a grant and help put sewer in there? I don't know, I haven't heard of. I haven't heard of any, I mean...
I'll find out.
Some funding that has, does have like a beginning of a grant with it, but...
I'll call it.
Probably grants are getting harder and harder to get, and what you can do now is what's long term, whether it's a lot, or a property that's...
And then, I also have concerns, if you, if you get the Rose property, guys, we're building a high school, you know, when are we gonna build it? Somewhere down the road, I mean, I don't blame Mr. Rose one bit for wanting something down with his land, 'cause you know, history and times, not only school board, government, people gonna sell his land, you know, so that's something you gotta keep in mind, if we set the Rose property, now we gotta keep moving forward with other stuff, because we have Preston property, you buy the Preston property, there's no strings attached, you know, move what you wanna build on one day, and when you wanna build on one day, that's the other factor.
I know there's been talk of a second exit, you know, off the interstate, a se, another exit off the interstate, I know that's been talked about, where would that be in location with that?
Well, it's right now, they've niched it, and they're gonna widen the bridge down there at the, at the 258.
Okay.
Which is gonna be a big mistake, but, you know, and that may change if somebody else gets selected, you can't never tell, which will be two years down the road, but what they were gonna do is put the exit right here, move the, move the aisle back where that dark place is on the interstate, right there where it says 40 on the other side over here, go east.
Go east.
Right there, they was gonna put it right in there.
Okay.
And then they were gonna take this road, the, what I call travel to ferry, what is it, 264, 254, go up here, like you're going to, going up, going up, hang a lift now, go over the hill, it was gonna go over its hill, over its property, and it was gonna join 53.
Okay.
I, I like, I like for the board's purposes, and we've, we've got a really, with them, personally, I like to see us make a decision at the next board meeting.
I think we have, I believe we have to.
We're lucky, and, and I think we're blessed to have two pieces of property sitting right here in Gornville that we can choose from, that's almost never heard of, and I think the board, I think we're gonna have to get a piece of property, no matter which piece of property we choose, we're gonna have to secure us a piece of property, because Mr. Warren, Mr. Gibbs can tell you, Rose coming, it's coming, so, like I said, I say good things and bad things on both properties, I might flip the coin, I don't know.
The strike, that bill board lease expires in 2024, it's a 20 year lease entered in 2004.
But I think, I think the board, at, at the next board meeting, we need to sign on this property.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes, we, that needs to be on the, that needs to be on the new business next meeting. Yes, we, that needs to be on the, that needs to be on the new business next meeting.
I, I've, I've read, I've read the contract, so Mr. Rose, I think section five, we've been negotiating, was it maybe about twenty-four months or something? I don't, I think twenty-four months, it's a, it's a quid, but if you look at his, if you read his full contract or his proposals, it's not, it's not outrageous.
We wrote it, so he explained him for it.
It is not outrageous. My first, my first read it, I thought it sounded like was, then I found that it was, it was still a ghost, so.
He just, he just don't want us getting in, not doing nothing, sitting there, sitting there five, six years, nothing going on. And I understand that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to either.
Anybody sitting here, if you're going to give a piece of property that value to the, to the?
I'd do the same thing. I would do the same thing.
Mr. Winker?
Yes, sir.
If, in, in that word says about the plan being in place, now does that also give the timeframe and the completion? Is that something that was brought up?
No, ma'am, there's no timeframe.
No, no timeframe, completion is just.
We're just going to have a plan in place.
Plan in place.
But if we, if we're five years building a stadium.
Oh, it's got to be funded.
Yes.
Okay.
Or planned for funding.
Plan, plan for funding. Can he come to the meeting, next meeting?
I'm sorry?
Can John come to the next meeting?
I certainly ask.
Yeah, it's going to be a new, but it's going to be a new business, I'm going to, the next meeting.
That'll eliminate all here, so he's standing right there and telling you what he's wanting.
I, 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 I don't want to put him on the spot, but in the past, we've always put the direct proposal on the spot.
Yep.
But I was saying, direct, what, what would you suggest, what would you recommend?
That's what I got to this whole. No, I, well, I tell you this, I'm not trying to tell you politically, I'm trying to tell you policy. As a business person myself, I'm spending my money, and I'm not getting one candidate's money. I buy the Preston piece of property. I'm being honest, because I think there's a lot more possibilities with it for me. But as a public official, you don't want to have to ask people, I think the first thing, and I would have done the same thing before I was in this role, I said, look at him. He went about five hundred thousand a piece of property, and they give him a million dollars, that's good, it'll end up doubling or tripling where it's worth. Now, they give you a million dollar piece of property, apparently he's too dumb to take it. So, it's just hard, I think, anytime anybody gives you that kind of numbers, of perceptions, to take it. And I, I'm not trying to dance around the subject, if I, I would tell you, as a, as a business, as an investment, I buy the piece of property, because Jerry Warren, I've talked to you how many times? Several times. I've sent, sent people, I know you're tired of getting somebody down there trying to get free answers, okay? But, but, but that has got all the utilities running there, I mean, they're just hooked up, you know. And we wouldn't have to build a football field, you know, because I think they, but you wouldn't base your people that I trust, they, they said, why you go down there? Why y'all got that piece of property down there in that hole? You know, the, the best piece of property in Goresville, and that's coming from other people, is behind the cornerstone, right? That's, that's a showpiece. So, I think it's perception, I think it's what you can get people to buy into, but that's their investment, because they're going to have to pay for it. I know I danced, but wait, it's hard to turn down when somebody's giving you that kind of free money, free property. And like the point I hadn't even thought of it, you go up there and said it. Another thing, if you take a foot or five hundred thousand, and it's you turned a half million man dollars, you don't value it.
Into, into one point two, one point three million dollars.
As together, it's worth, then you're looking at a two million or a million and a half, probably get more than several there. So, don't know that answers your question. Thank you. You have any questions for, really?
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Call me tomorrow, though.
It's just hard to turn down, anytime it's getting, somebody's giving you that kind of equity, that kind of money.
It's like Tom says, pros to cons to all of them, and time we get ready to do, so, you know, somebody, someone else may come in, it may be even closer than what it is now, you know what I'm saying?
Well, go back to what you just said about, like, the, the sporting area, the football field, no football field.
Like, like Tommy said, there's some, there's some big pros and cons to both pieces of property, but one, one pro to the Preston piece is that you can come straight out of the driveway at Goresville, and go straight across, and come in, you could locate your football field where you want, you, you, what I'm saying, you wouldn't have to put a football, your football field's here. So, if you come back here and build a high school, middle, whatever, you know.
Leave it work too.
You should have your football field, and I, I think tradition wise, that, Shane, I don't want to top job, but that, decent people that's big on trying to keep that football field, aren't they? You may build a field house and do some neat stuff there to that facility, so that would save.
It's a great football field.
I don't know what a football field counts, but it's a lot of dollars to be, and it would also give you, you know, you could do, it would give you a lot of flexibility someday, like Gina's, like, you know, we talked about tech, you know. Someday, way past our tenures, they, you know, you might buy all this, like, at one huge campus at the Roseville, you know, because you had, you know, there's some, there's definitely, and then you could come over here, and I know Shane and, and the coaches, they got some visions, wherever it's at, having their own baseball and softball field. Well, that, that would be all basically around on the campus. Of course, obviously, with a new facility, it would be there too, but, but it does give them, I think, it's some pro ready cost where it's sitting at. Actually, they don't even have to build a football field.
Well, you wouldn't have to build one period with the place, you ain't half a mile.
What?
You're not half a mile, a lot of places is like, uh, was it, was it Livingston? No, it's, uh.
It don't have the football field on the campus?
Yeah.
Um, Tribesville don't, does it now?
Tribesville don't, but there was one up there, they got a big bowl football field, you know what I'm talking about, like, again, and it's way away from school.
One Kenny.
Yeah, it's like, it's like five miles from school.
Mr. Apple, it says right now, Mr. Rose would want a no campus.
Yeah, he wouldn't, he wouldn't want you, that's, that's, that's what I was telling Tina, he would, he doesn't, he wants a full campus, and that, he made that very specific. He wanted a new football field, he wanted a new softball, baseball field on that piece of property. So, that's a cost that you would have to incur, which you bought the Preston piece, you wouldn't have to, because you could use the, the football athletic facility. If it was a high school, you may choose, like Tommy said, try to be as open as I can, we keep talking, a high school, a pro high school. You go to the.
Baseball, soccer field, football field, golf green, what else you want? This is first I've heard, is it?
It says athletic facility, so I think traditionally what you have.
It wants a GM on it too?
Well, yes, GM would be on it too.
I think traditionally speaking, he's talking about a baseball softball, because they don't have one, and a football field.
It's county's full, baseball softball fields. We got no softball field, baseball field in this county.
And it would have to be a high school, and, you know, if you bought the Preston piece, you'd have the flexibility. If you wanted to, you're going to K two, or K four, or four eight, that would be totally left up on the description, or a high school, but if you didn't want to. Well, here's another cost to the chip.
And there'll be more. Somebody's built a house.
I know. Yeah. That interstate from Red Rose makes me really uncomfortable.
Yeah, I'd say the idea about putting a road through there, that would be, ever good, you have to take any interest in it.
Anybody else have any more questions, discussion?
I'm liking this more and more.
You liking what more and more?
How, how often does that train go through?
I, I don't know, two, two times a week a year?
Once a day.
Once a day? What's the, what's the? What's the time, Shane? I mean, roughly?
What about here?
I thought on this, I thought about twice.
He usually runs two, he runs two to three times a week, and all they bring is gravel, about four fifty.
They just go down and they.
How long, how long a duration, I mean, is it, I guess, be, is it several minutes that it shut down, or?
I can tell you, it's been at the high school, which is a hundred yards from it, and you never know when it goes by, and it's not a.
It's not a long drive.
How long is the road block, Shane, roughly?
I'm sorry?
How, how long is the road block, trigger?
Oh, I.
Ten minutes, and most times, they, they usually pull thirty loads of rock at, at times.
Nothing hazardous or anything is wrong.
Thirty loads of rock out, if, if we'll see, I'll have to go in, and then, you know, load, and then they'll come back out. You get caught in it, you probably sit there five minutes.
I never recall it being, coming through it when school was going that narrow. I recall it a time or two coming from my house, I mean, I come from the, whatever, the east side, at school around seven every morning, I never, never remember coming through there. So, I don't think that's a, the issue.
It's just something that I know would be asked.
It's a good question, I mean, the safety end of it, the efficiency, if your buses got traffic, you know, in the, the line of parents, I mean.
It is. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Uh, just about, we just talked, I told you previously that there's a fifty-foot right away coming to Fairview Avenue?
Uh-huh.
There is not.
Oh, I thought, I looked at it, I thought I saw it on the flash.
That's our easement, it's a sewer right there.
All right, let's clear that up then, guy.
There is a sewer easement there.
Well, I seen it, I seen it as a.
I don't, I can't find it.
I seen it on something, Mr. Gibbs, that I thought it was a right away, I went red.
Whatever, I thought I had two.
Do you think there is, Mr. Warren, think that?
I think, but I think that would be worth research.
Yeah, that's, that's would be really valuable.
That's really important.
And research is somewhere I found it, feet, uh, basically fifty-foot right away.
Does it go all the way to Hobie Road? There, there's a, on the mouth, there's an easement, it was that same easement, it's like it crosses Fairview all the way down.
That's a sewer.
That's, I bet you have the sewer.
I think this other one has a, it's an access or.
Yeah, actually, I didn't want to say that I wasn't sure, but it looked like it's more back closer to the main road.
So, then the only way is the long way on two sixty-four?
Yeah, could you?
Is there only one way in that two sixty-four?
Uh, if.
Because if the train tracks go across there.
Yeah, if it does, that's going to make, that's going to limit it small, because I, I had read somewhere in research, there was an easement somewhere back in here, or a right away. But like I said, I could have looked at it, and it could have been a sewer, Mr. Gibbs, but it looked like a right away. And I, I don't, I've looked at some, I don't know.
So, the only access would be on two sixty-four, that area right over there?
If not, that would be it, yeah.
That, that little corner property, does it go with it, right here on the other side of the railroad track?
No.
That little corner property going?
No, they go to the other place, the place of property.
Your pump house, your pump house, it's, you can't see it, but it's, it's right in there. I was talking about that piece of property right here.
How, how would we deal with that?
Right there?
No.
No.
How, how would we deal with that, then, because of that, I mean, two sixty-four as it sits with the train track and everything with the, with the traffic? How would we handle the traffic flow? That's what I'm asking.
You would have to figure out, you know, obviously, if a engineer spec for its traffic flow, but you'd have to figure out some way, you'd have, you, it's got several feet of road frontage, I mean, you'd have a lot of options on because there's a, there's actually some road, but it's what they use to get, get into hay and stuff, right here, kind of covert, kind of that, that one you have to use it in.
I put a little, what they call it, uh, clover, clover, like, where you got to come in and go, one goes this way, you know, you got buses going different way.
You, you've got a lot of, that's several feet, I think, that's not, that's a, that's several, probably several.
Oh, I, I know, I've, I've paid that road, I know what it is, I'm just.
Yeah, that's what, so I'm not, you could probably anywhere you wanted to get creative, one drive, two drives, circle, but it would probably be, if Shane is correct, it would be, or you just have to come back out on, on that, that road, but, but that's one that has, that made it attractive to me, if you had the others, you might could figure bus route, circle in, or parents at least could circle, that's something we all tried to research before.
Kind of like with.
If we could help me, we need to find that out.
Right there should be, if that, if, if you got an easement, if that's not a sewer easement, that should be it right there, but I bet that's a sewer easement.
Right there, Mr. Warren, is that you?
Because it's, it's not numbered, like it has an owner.
No, that's not a.
That's a sewer easement, I think.
I didn't get you that.
Can, can you kind of bring it this way just a little bit? I was under the impression that somewhere that, that it was right in through here, but, I mean, right through here, I, I, what I looked at, but I saw it on something, it was a, like a fifty-foot somewhere in this flatter area right there, since I recall.
It's not showing it on property view, or is it?
Well, at least Tennessee property view, or.
They showing something out there, sort of, all that in, far.
They don't work out right. Those are off the tax maps, which are never right.
Yeah. Are you showing it as? Yeah, right here.
Right, right here.
That's the one that you, that one y'all asked about.
Mm-hmm.
That's the one you're showing us, yeah.
I think that's it, I had to, it had to be checked, to be sure, that I, I was, I was finished showing that. I agree, Mr. Butler, it's kind of hard to tell on property view sometimes.
Is that the side sewers on, or sewers on the?
Yeah.
Side?
Yeah, I see, I see a way it's sewer, you know, for several reasons, go all the way over, you know. If they had it, stop their car, but, uh, these people weren't there.
If there is sewer going through there, can you drive over it?
Uh, I don't know what you're saying.
I, I was just asking, if there's like a fifty-foot.
Straight, yeah, you could, but, uh. That's, 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 it's just, whether we've got sewer easement or whether we've got an easement to get to that property, that's where it starts or what. Don't know, they would have to ask you.
But to answer your question, like, yeah, you can drive over a sewer, you just got to build a right, and then, most time, we prefer to put sewer in the middle of the road, because that way we get to the main side.
They put a pipe, they put a cover in there, and put a pipe in the manhole that way. I mean, you go down Jackson or Jefferson or Wayne Tarthage, and all you're looking at, I was in the middle of the street.
It'd be a, it's probably not an option for a bus, though, I don't know how wide that is.
Fifty foot is pretty wide.
I'm talking about trying to get back on Fairview.
Oh.
Making the turn back out on Fairview would not be.
I, I figured that would be just an auxiliary entrance for everybody but buses. That's what I'm saying, yeah.
It would, it would use, it would just use some options, if you had it, it would make it a lot more attractive for the fat cars, it'd make it, car riders, if you then softball, baseball fields in there, you could, where you could block it, charge, and bring them in a certain way, it would really limit your access, or open it, depending on where you want to use it.
How many feet they have to run that sewer line up to the other property? How many feet approximately have to run the sewer line?
It's been two thousand.
Two thousand feet.
When they're right, Jerry, just estimate about two thousand feet.
Where?
On the road piece, yeah.
Yes, sir, that was.
Just a rough estimate.
Where does it begin at? Where does it begin at?
Where, where it begins.
Mm-hmm.
There's a manhole back at the corner, back there where the dog was over there.
Okay.
Is there not sewer there at Cornerstone, or is it?
I believe Cornerstone has a service line that goes to them, but I think you own, that's just a service line to them.
Bank hooking, they don't agree with their bank hooking, do they come around the bank hooking for them? And they are right.
Two thousand feet. Two thousand feet's a quarter mile. Two thousand's quarter mile. Hey, no, that's, that's running, no, that's, that's too far. What am I thinking wrong?
Any more questions? It's kind of everybody's knows, I guess, everything that you know, and.
And if you think there's something, I'd be happy to, we don't know what for research, if you get these, if there's a next meeting, somebody else, you, you think you have some good questions, you might, we're on something.
And we do know that next meeting, this will have to be on his new business, because of the option running out on the Preston property. So, we'll put it on next meeting's agenda. If there's no more questions, we'll adjourn. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Jerry, gentlemen, thank you.